Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I have several people I want to thank very briefly. All eight of our candidates for District Nine on the School Board. People are willing to put themselves out and serve. It's a blessing to have people like each and every one of the eight of you. I cannot tell you how much we appreciate your willing to serve. Several things, a few bookkeeping things I want to tell tonight. One is that we have a radio station here, we have a TV station here, but we also have live strain. It's going to be recorded, it can be played back, and all the District Nine constituents and actually the whole county will be able to look in and see it. We've picked the, I say not "we," but the questions were picked from the original ones that were on the format to Mrs. Ford. The wonderful, whoever, whichever one of you gets this position, Mrs. Sherri Ford is an angel, and she will keep you out of trouble like she did me for seven years. She kept me from so much trouble, it's unbelievable. But I am very thankful for the Hamilton County PTA Council, and they have been the people that are handing out the cards, and Ms. Emily, correct, am I correct on that, is going to be the timer, and she, on the original, the first four-minute segment, she will hold up one minute, and then she'll hold, raise your hand, Ms. Emily, show them, she'll have one minute, and then she'll hold up time, and then she'll hold up thirty seconds.
When it's the two minutes?
Pardon me?
Just the two-minute questions.
On the two minutes she'll hold up, just, but on the four minutes she'll do the one minute and the thirty.
Okay.
Right?
I can, sure.
And just, just hold it up. You don't have to say anything. If you don't mind, just hold it up, and that way they can, they can judge how much time. And I do ask for fairness that you cut it off at four. Some of you are men or women, a few words, and you may go less than four minutes, and that's fine, but we do ask that you not go over four. And I am so thankful for everyone. Some people brought questions in this evening, and they, if we can get to them, we will, but we're going to take those that were sent in in the original format first. And we'll have four minutes on your introduction to tell your qualifications, your background, and why you want to serve. And several people asked why you wanted to serve, and I think we'll cover that in your original four minutes. So that will be helpful. I, we're very blessed tonight to have a lifelong District Nine resident, my friend since childhood. We were friends as children. His uncle went to the church where my dad preached, and we've known each other, we were playmates before school age. And LeBron Sturkey was a great athlete, he was a great teacher and coach, and a great administrator, and he's just a very good man. And so he has agreed to be our emcee tonight, and I cannot tell you, again, how much I appreciate him. And for each of you and all the District Nine constituents, thank you very much. Mr. Sturkey.
Very good. Thank you, Steve, first of all. Again, we won't tell you how far back those childhood days were, will we, as far as that? But again, as Dr. Highlander said, thank you for willing, willing to serve or potentially serve as a school board member. So we're going to go ahead and start it. We've got a two-hour time limit, I've been told. So keep that in mind, we're going to adhere to that as far as that.
I did already tell them, LeBron, you don't have to tell again, that we will start with each question with one person, and go down the line, and then start with the next person and the next question. So they will not be hit with the first one to answer every question. I think our two gentlemen on the end might have been a little bit apprehensive about that.
Y'all threw the short straw. So we are going to start, first of all, we're going to start, first of all, you know what?
And I'm going to have to make sure, Kenny, okay, I didn't see that far, James, Patrick. Okay, very good. Again, so let's go ahead and begin. First of all, we'll begin with Kenny, as far as that. And again, remember you have four minutes as far as that.
Sorry, because they still can't hear, sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah, we can pull that mic real close, maybe not so.
Yeah, definitely it's not my small voice. Test one, two, three, test one, two, three. See what, see if, my wife says I'm way too loud as it is. That PE voice.
And your principal's voice.
Yes, yes, probably the coaching voice was the loudest. That's what I've been told.
It's being recorded, he can hear you back there.
Okay.
So it's being recorded.
Very good. Okay, we're going to begin. Again, best wishes for each one of you tonight as far as that. First of all, Kenny, the first question. How have you supported public education, your community, in the?
Excuse me a second. You're going to do the four-minute introduction first.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I forgot. That's my fault, Kenny. I was already going to pop you with the question, okay? All right, Kenny, we're going to get this, all the ducks. I'm sorry, I was kind of late. I had to go to the doctor. I've been having some stomach issues, and he just let me go. Well, I'm fifty-eight. But Kenny, first of all, the question, again, not a question, but you want to introduce yourself, you have four minutes to begin in now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, LeBron. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your consideration. My name is Charles K. Lawson, I go by Kenny. I live in Udoa, I have lived in Udoa my whole entire life. My parents, grandparents, all of them are from Udoa, so I feel like I'm pretty familiar, familiar with the area. I attended Udoa High School, graduated from there. My children and my grandchildren attend Udoa High School, Udoa Schools. So I've lived in the area my whole life. We were last cras- graduated from the old high school, which was nineteen seventy-five, so I refer to the Udoa High School now as the new school still, and it's, there again, it's a forty-year-old building now, but I still call it the new Udoa High School. I've graduated high school, started to work, probably eight, ten years after working, I decided I was going to do night classes, so I went to school at UTC. I took two years of classes at UTC, and when my oldest child got old enough that he was starting to participate in high, middle school and high school sports, I decided it was time for me to accept my station in life, and I stayed electrician. I retired from the Hamilton County Department of Education with twenty-six years of service, and enjoyed every minute of it. You all know about the jobs, they say, it's not a job if you enjoy going, and I never went to work a day in my life. I really, really enjoyed working for the school system. Leading, leading into that, I think that that amount of time has given me a, kind of a unique perspective into the things that go on in this, with our school system. I've worked all over the system, from Cell Creek to Lookout Valley to Lookout Mountains, so I wasn't ever just specifically working in one location. And we have really, really good people working in this system. I've worked with the custodians, the cafeteria staff, as well as the administrators. There's other folks you're going to hear from tonight that has worked with this system, and they're great folks as well. I know them, I know them fairly personally. I know LeBron fairly personally. So there's good, there's good folks in this system. But with my, my experience was, like I said, with maintenance and with the facilities issues that we face in this day and time with our system, it's a huge, huge issue. And I think my experience gives me a perspective there that a lot of the board members that's sitting up there right now do not have. And I think it would help my reason for wanting to serve. Like I said, I have six grandchildren now, they're in the schools, and some of the things that you see now, that they're wanting to start with education, you want to kind of, I just want to have a hand in some of the things that my grandchildren are learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Alrighty, okay, Gary Keane's the next candidate. Gary, time begins now. Thank you.
I'm Gary Keane, and I'm here to serve. Not only do I live in the D-nine community and have for forty-four years, I have a vested interest. I had three sons, thanks to Snow Hill Brown Middle School and Central High School that successfully graduated and are now leading productive lives, and now have grandchildren that will be attending the D-nine community at Udoa Elementary and Wolf Teever Creek in the very, very near future. I've been an instructional leader and an advocate for kids for thirty-nine years. Thirty-six of those years have been in the D-nine community, and of those thirty-six years, twenty-two as an administrator at Central High School, Hunter Middle School following after Mr. Sturkey, the Hamilton County Adult High School, and also the new Harrison Bay Future Ready Center. I believe I am qualified to be a school board candidate and represent D-nine because I do look for what's best for students. I've been an advocate for students, I've been there for second chances and even third chances for students, regardless of their age. I believe in strong educational practices and have had years of training for that, but also I'm a problem solver. I think that if you talk to D-nine community people, many of which I had as students, and now I have their children, they would say that I was tough but fair. I think that they would also say I had an open-door policy that was available most any time, and that I would continue to do as a D-nine candidate. I think as a school board candidate, besides student achievement, Mr. Lawson mentioned it, I think we need to be looking at the betterment, and very similar to D-seven, the rising population, we need to start thinking about where other schools are going to go, the improvement of the schools we have. But then also, one thing I'd like to see is, as a principal from the Adult High School and now the Future Ready Institute, I saw a disconnect from middle school, even from high school, to what students wanted to do as a future occupation and a career. And that's one thing that I think is important that will save both time and money. So I would just like to, again, serve the D-nine community, and thank you for your time for being here.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Alrighty, next is Pam Womack. Pam, your time begins right now.
I think I've torn it up.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, tilt it up just a little bit, Pam. There you go.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Pam Womack, and I'm a product of Hamilton County Schools. I graduated from Central High School, Pounders Pounders Veselab, I'm the class of seventy-five. Do the math, you can figure out how old I am. I have taught in the District Nine School District for sixteen years at Snow Hill Elementary, enjoyed every minute of teaching at that school. My children both attended schools in the district, they attended Snow Hill Hunter Middle with Mr. Sturkey, and graduated from Udoa High School. So I believe in Hamilton County schools. I believe that we are successful. I think that we are people that care about our kids, that want the best for our students, and want our students to be successful, and that's why I'm running for school board. In two thousand and nine, I retired from working in the Hamilton County Schools, and, and as, as, at the end of my career, I was a principal of a magnet school. During the time that I was in Hamilton County Schools, I've taught in nine different schools, so I know a lot about the district. I taught in some of the poorest schools in the district. I've taught in some of the richest schools in the district. I've taught in rural schools, suburban schools, and I finished my career in a magnet school. So I know the schools of our district. I know the culture, the climate, the families that go to those schools. I didn't know the magnet schools until I became a magnet school principal, but I understand that concept also. The last six years of my career, I was a principal at Chattanooga School for the Liberal Arts. And I'll be honest with you, when I was given that appointment, I didn't even know what a magnet school was about. I'd spent my time out in Udoa, teaching in that area, didn't really know, didn't understand the concept, but once I was placed there, I fell in love with the concept. It's not for every student, but it is for those students that choose and their parents want them to go there. I retired in two thousand and nine because my mother was ill and I needed to no longer be a principal, I needed to be a daughter. And one month, the district let me be retired, and then they hired me back. They hired me back as a teacher recruiter. I worked part-time for five years. I traveled all over Tennessee, North Georgia, some in Alabama, recruiting teachers for this district. And I took that job very seriously. I'm an old coach, like some of us, and I were recruiting for the best team. I wanted the best teachers, I wanted the most educated teachers, and I wanted the right fit. Because I would tell people that I recruited, you have a lot of shoes in your closet, but you want to put on the shoe that fits the best for you. And I wanted the teachers to fit the students. I believe that our students deserve that, they deserve the best teachers. So I worked very hard at that. After I left Hamilton County, I decided that I wanted to work in higher education and help to prepare and produce teachers. So I went to work at Lee University. I have been teaching full-time at Lee University at the College of Education, and I have been preparing teachers. And I do promote the teachers at Lee to come to work here in Hamilton County. I encourage them. I place them here as student teachers. I, I am not a politician. I'm a teacher. I want to do what's best for kids. Every decision I made as a teacher, every decision I made as an administrator, every decision I've ever made, even as a parent, was best for kids. And that's where my decisions will be made. They will be what's best for children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Next is Patrick Hampton. Patrick, your time begins.
All right, thank you for having me today. My name is Patrick Hampton. I'm an Udoa resident, a minister, an education activist. I've spent the better part of my life helping our local students excel and achieve. I've supervised mentorship programs, taught career development skills to students as director of Youth Advantage at Chattanooga Goodwill. I've recruited educators to facilitate college prep programs for Chattanooga links, and I've worked as a substitute history teacher at Ivy Academy, and later I served as dean of students at Chattanooga Charter School of Excellence, where I oversaw classroom management, school policies, and parent workshops. I've been in many roles, but most importantly, I'm here because I'm a concerned parent. And if you have kids in our public schools, you should be concerned as well. The number of parents that tell me today that they are pulling their children out of school is outstanding, and that's not in a good way. As a parent advocate who supports school choice, I believe that there is room for all forms of education in Hamilton County. That's public schools, private schools, and even homeschooling. That said, if Hamilton County schools should retain their enrollment levels, that would be because it is well-represented by a school, by a school board that reflects diverse ideas of its constituents. The consequence of failing to do so will be bleak, and it should be unsettling to all of us. It's telling by the narrative that we're being introduced today with our public schools, where our children are learning things like critical race theory, gender identity, and other race-centric curriculum that pins God's children against other children. We are creating young people who will arrive at adulthood stuck before they even have a chance to flourish. Their future will be over before it begins if we continue down this road. But there is a solution, a way to brace this failing, failing wall by reinforcing our board with a more parental leadership focus. We have to do this before it's too late. I'm asking you to appoint me. And the reason I'm asking you to appoint me, because I will be a solid wall on the school board to protect our children. As a strong fiscal and social conservative, I am aware that District Nine is the fastest-growing area in the county. That means that all of our tax dollars is extayed. The question commissioners in District Nine must ask today, in two thousand and nineteen, when there was a tax increase facing the commission, you have to ask yourself, who was at that commission meeting fighting for your tax dollars? I was there. In two thousand and nineteen, in District Nine, when there was a white privilege teacher training in our district, who did the teachers call to expose that? They called me. And the reason they called me, because they know I would, I am a solid wall against progressive ideology with our students. That is why I'm here, and that is why I'm running for District Nine School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have Trey House. Trey?
Thank you, everybody, for having, having me here this evening. Obviously, everybody knows me as William House. I do go by Trey. And I would first like to thank my wife Angie and our kids, Joy and Ivan, for giving me the opportunity to do this and to serve the people of District Nine. My back, my background, I'm currently employed at EBB Employees Credit Union as the assistant manager, and my emphasis has been in accounting and budgeting. And part of the reason why I decided to run for school board is to, I feel like we have not been good stewards of the money that the county commission has given us over the last several years, and someone needs to step up and put a, put a stop to that, be more accountable for the funds that we, that we are receiving. Also, I'm running for District Nine because I feel like District Nine is not being represented, not, not, I don't want to say not be representing property, but we've not been represented, and I think that's happened in the last couple of weeks with the news, with the new interim superintendent. District Nine had no say and no vote in that. In saying that, as part of that, I want to be there to fight for the rights and freedoms of not only the children, but the parents of the, of the people of District Nine. And over the last several months, in the last couple of years, that is also, I feel like, has not been established within, within the Hamilton County school system. And like I said, District Nine, the people of District Nine is who I really want to represent. My background is not in the education system. My background is in finance and banking. Therefore, I am an outsider to the Hamilton County school system. That's , I think, an advantage I have, is that I bring new ideas and new perspectives to the school board, and how, you know, ways things need to be improved, instead of having this, you know, everything being the same, or having, you know, doing the same thing over and over again. The experiences that my wife and I've had with dealing with the Hamilton County school system in regards to our child that has a disability has been mixed. There have been people in the school system that have been great and have helped us every way possible, and then there, there have been people in the school system that have not, not been as helpful as they could be. That's also where I would want to come in and help, and help those families, not only in District Nine, but all families with disability, have children with disabilities. And if the school system is not the place for them to be, then there's other alternatives to having, you know, the proper education for your child. But I want to be the one that fights, you know, not only for families with children's with disabilities, but for all families with children. Like I said, I'm an outsider, bringing a new perspective, and I've always told my wife, I said, if I ever wanted to run for, you know, run for anything, it was because of school board. And why, and the reason why is because I feel like I can help the most people directly that way. And that's why, that's why I have put my name in the hat for this position, because I feel like I can help the most people in our district. I would also be, if I did not forget, to thank Dr. Highlander for having us here this evening, and just the, the job he's done over the last seven years. And I would hope that come next Thursday, that I would be able to fulfill, fulfill his term on the school board the best way I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trey. All right, next is James Walker. Hey, James.
Thank you, Coach. How are you doing?
Yes, sir.
Fine. Good. James Walker, I've been a lifelong resident of District Nine, went to Harrison Elementary, Brown Middle School, and Central High School. I've had four daughters go through District Nine school, and all four graduated from Central High School. I've been there. I'm excited that there's eight folks that want to put their name in the hat. And, you know, like Coach Highlander said, you know, the excitement and the people that care in this community is really, impresses me today. I feel the school board seat is an extension of the community. And, and by that, I mean, we're the voice of the parents and the families first. I love our teachers, one of the, the, you know, sometimes I saw a teacher and say, that's one of the most thankless jobs ever, and the teacher, no, you don't see how the kids react to us. We get thanked every day by our kids. But I think my position on the board is to speak for our students and families, a hundred percent. I've served through Harrison Recreation, started out coaching back in nineteen ninety, served on Central Alumni Association Board since two thousand and seven. We are one of the, one of the high schools in Tennessee, and everybody's tried to figure this out, but we always say we have the most scholarships that we give out to any high school in Tennessee, and that's just a group of alumni that get together. We give out fourteen to twenty scholarships every year to deserving seniors. That's a community that gets together and has raised those monies. Been involved with Central Football Booster Club. I had four daughters, so, you know, I didn't have any football players, but I got involved with football because I grew up without a father in the house, and the coaches that, that were out there meant something to me. I wasn't much of a football player, but they invested time in me, and I kind of got back a few years ago when our kids got in high school and started getting involved with football boosters. I've coached some baseball with Patrick Hampton over here in the past, and, you know, it's, it's about the community. The, the organization I'm a part of now, the D-nine Udoa Harrison Education Foundation, there's a couple other founding members in this room with us right now. We had some parents that went out to Udoa Elementary School when they opened it up, and there were some classrooms that we weren't going to be able to use. And I always called them the mad moms, but they got together and, and started this grassroots organization. And we call it D-nine Udoa Harrison Education Foundation. We wanted to invest in the five elementary schools in D-nine. We were very successful with private funding, with Walmart, with Pizza Hut and groups like that who wanted to come on board with us. And we went into the middle schools, were able to give money to each of the middle schools in D-nine. And then for the last two years, we've given fifteen hundred dollar scholarships to Central and Udoa students as well. Very proud of that organization. But there's a part of me that I sit back and look at that and think that these are parents that wanted to be involved, and they went out and did something about it. What we've got to do is be able to have parents involved to look at our budget as a school board, and see where we can go and find that extra money. And I'm so proud of the work that we've done, but I don't think parents feel like they can go and have a say in this school board. You know, I, I've, I've never had problems speaking my mind, and I've always been able to reach out to Coach Highlander and his predecessors and county commissioners and things, but I don't think the majority of people feel like they can do that. And we've got to get the school board and the school system back where we're a part of it. And by that, I mean our parents and our children, our students. And people in the community always reach out to me when something comes up because they know I'm not afraid to say something, and I'll always speak up for our communities. And I'm very proud to, to be sitting up here today and, and look forward to serving this community as a school board member come August fourth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, James. Next, Patrick Lee. Patrick?
How you doing? My name is Patrick.
And I kind of got back a few years ago when our kids got in high school and started getting involved with football boosters. I've coached some baseball with Patrick Hampton over here in the past. And, you know, it's, it's about the community. The, the organization I'm a part of now, D9 Udois Harrison Education Foundation, there's a couple of other founding members in this room with us right now. We had some parents that went out to Udois Elementary School when they opened it up, and there were some classrooms that we weren't going to be able to use. And I always called them the mad moms, but they got together and, and, and started this grassroots organization. And we call it D9 Udois Harrison Education Foundation. We wanted to invest in the five elementary schools in D9. We were very successful with private funding, with Walmart, with Pizza Hut and groups like that who wanted to come onboard with us. And we went into the middle schools, were able to give money to each of the middle schools in D9. And then for the last two years, we've given $1,500 scholarships to Central and Udois students as well. Very proud of that organization. But there's a part of me that I sit back and look at that and think that these are parents that wanted to be involved, and they went out and did something about it. What we've got to do is be able to have parents involved to look at our budget as a school board and see where we can go and find that extra money. And I'm so proud of the work that we've done, but I don't think parents feel like they can go and have a say in this school board. You know, I, I've, I've never had problems speaking my mind, and I've always been able to reach out to Coach Highlander and his predecessors and our county commissioners and things, but I don't think the majority of people feel like they can do that. And we've got to get the school board and the school system back where we're a part of it. And by that, I mean our parents and our children, our students. And people in the community always reach out to me when something comes up because they know I'm not afraid to say something. And I'll always speak up for our communities. And I'm very proud to, to be sitting up here today and, and look forward to serving this community as a school board member come August 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next, Patrick Lee. Patrick?
My name is Patrick Lee, and I've lived here most of my life. I did leave for a little while. But my wife and I, we, we run a small business. It's a mower, it's handsy outdoor power. We do lawn mowers and we sell lawn mowers and outdoor kitchens, things like that. But it's, it's in the district also. But I guess my, my why is why I'm here is we've taken on some, some kids and we've got a few girls now that, we've got a few girls that needed, needed a home and they're going to be going to, you know, District Nine schools. And with the COVID and everything, they got way behind. And so when we first got them, that's what we worked on was getting them up to grade level where they needed to be. And it was hard. And there's, 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 I don't know what, you know, what we all got going on here for, for making up for all that mess with COVID, but it, it, we need some help. And so that's why I threw my hat in the ring and I thought, well, you know, I went to Udois Elementary School, all the way to Udois High School. I graduated from UTC. I was at UTC, I did get a scholarship as a cheerleader. I was in the Simukai Fraternity. I was, then I went to work a couple of years in Atlanta, about 12 years I was out in Utah. And I was fortunate enough to get into some, I've worked for some software companies doing marketing and product management. And then I got involved with mobility products, like for people with disabilities. We modified vehicles and homes for all kinds of ability, you know, constant access for people to get in and out of buildings in their cars. And I feel like I have a lot to offer as far as, you know, school board, school board member, I feel like there's a lot missing as far as, we've got a lot of people up here with children with disabilities. And my, my son actually went to Hamilton County Schools and he was a hearing impaired student. And so I think I have a lot of experience with, with that, that I can, you know, contribute. And as far as education, you know, I have my degree and then my, my wife has a degree in nutrition. And I have a stepdaughter, she's got back from University of London, she's got a PhD. She just came back about a year ago and she actually runs part of our shop right now. But I think there's a big trend towards, you know, some skilled education that be more hands-on, like welding and things like that. My stepson's actually a welder. He makes really good money being a welder. And I think there's two different paths kids can take. And I think that helping them transition one or the other and figuring out what path is going to be helpful for them is something that's important. But I, I just felt like I needed to step up because I, you know, was, I had great teachers and I didn't realize what kind of education that I really had till I got out there and I didn't appreciate it. It's amazing how wonderful, you know, caring teachers can be and make a difference in the things you can accomplish later in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Roddy Coe. Roddy?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Roddy Coe. I'm an Army veteran. I'm a governor-appointed member of the Tennessee Council on Developmental Disabilities and the Tennessee Council on Autism Spectrum Disorders. I'm a court-appointed special advocate for at-risk and abused children. I'm a passionate advocate for all students, and most importantly, I'm a dad. I've been honored to work with leaders at all levels. I am grateful to Governor Haslam for the, for originally believing in me, to appoint me to the Council on Developmental Disabilities and then the Council on Autism Spectrum Disorders. I appreciate the continued support of Governor Lee for reappointing me to both councils. I was honored with the opportunity to work with State Representative Mike Carter to protect non-communicative individuals when involved with law enforcement. This opportunity grew into the Take Me Home program. This program is available to all residents of Hamilton County. This program came to fruition after collaboration with Representative Carter, Senator Gardenhire, Police Chief Roddy, Sheriff Hammond, Chief Garrett, and Chattanooga Fire Captain Phillips. I'm humbled to continue working with our leaders to ensure our community is inclusive for all. Some of this work includes partnering with Chattanooga Councilman Ledford on a project to build a fully inclusive playground at Heritage Park, also teaming up with Senators Watson and Massey and Representatives Hilton, Jernigan, and Doggett to ensure public spaces are inclusive for all. I've personally held multiple board officer roles with multiple nonprofits and management roles within for-profit business. These experiences have taught me budget evaluation and fiscal responsibility, staff recruitment and management, and communication. In 2018, I was recognized by the Tennessee General Assembly for my advocacy work. These experiences have taught me how to advocate for action to support our students, parents, and teachers. While I may not have the teaching experience that some of my peers here today do, I've had the privilege of attending and learning from Hamilton County's own leaders, our teachers and administrators in leadership Hamilton County schools. Class of 2020, if anybody wondered who the best was. This program allowed me to see the successes and challenges that are being felt throughout our district. In addition to that, I've had the good fortune to learn from educational giants at Vanderbilt and the University of Tennessee from across the state to provide optimum support for teachers and students. The school board is responsible for laying the foundation and putting in place the building blocks for students to learn, grow, and achieve at the highest possible level. This is not just for a single group of students, but for all students. I feel my voice will help to ensure that all students, including those part of marginalized communities, are remembered and included. Thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Roddy. All righty. Yes, sir.
If I can interrupt you just one second. I'll tell you, I've been blown away by all eight of them. I really have. But there are two people here that need to be recognized, and I'm remiss in not doing that. My cohort and partner on the commission, Ms. Sabrina Smedley is here tonight, and several of the other commissioners have said they plan to watch the live stream and take notes and look at it and review it. And also, we have a school board member, Mr. Tucker McLendon. And we're very appreciative. I wanted to recognize those two, and please forgive the interruption.
No, no problem at all. Again, I, I want to echo what Dr. Highlander said. I too, I know some of you, I, it's a pleasure to meet those that I have not had a chance to meet, but it's pretty exciting to see what you have put yourself in front of. And public education, of course, is the most important, I think, that we deal with today with all the issues that these young people face, the issues that teachers face. So again, I thank you. We learned a lot. You had the first four minutes, it was a piece of cake. Okay? Now you've become a student almost. You're going to get a chance, two minutes, to answer some questions. Now, the first question that was on the list, I personally feel like each one of you have answered. The question was, how have you supported public education, your community, in the past? If there's any candidate that feels like you did not get a chance to address that, I'll give you 30 seconds to, but I really feel like each one of you had a chance to express your support and the community. Does that, is that agreeable with everyone? Okay, now, question number two. And again, my understanding, we're going to start with Kenny, Kenneth, okay? And then, and then we'll start the next question with Mr. King, and we'll go down through the line as far as that. Okay, Kenny, here's the question. You have two minutes. What do you believe are the three greatest challenges slash issues for public education?
That's a unique question, this year especially. Obviously, everybody knows we've been, we've gone through a pandemic that everybody, nobody's had their head under a rock for that long. So we have a lot of kids. I, I sat at home, being newly retired, I sat at home with grandkids in front of the computer. It's horrible, horrible, horrible job. So we, we've got a lot of catching up to go. We, we, we can't be naive to think that, that some of our kids have not fallen far, far, far behind. So it's, we, we, that is a big, big job facing us. The other is some of the social issues that are being brought up right now. The CRT, although I realize that the state of Tennessee has said that it will not be taught in our schools, and, and, and I'm fully supportive of that, but through social media outlets, the, the, the kids, the, especially the high school kids, are all aware of these kind of issues, and they all see that, that them things are out there. So you're going to have the varying, varying opinions on, on, on them things facing our schools. And the third thing that we have, obviously, is, is one of the things that's near and dear to my heart is the facilities issue that our school system faces. There's a, there's, there are schools that are very, very out, needed updating, and the facility plan they've come up with is an ongoing, ever-moving thing. And that is something that we're going to have to deal with.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Gary?
Yes. I think the first and foremost is the recovery of learning loss during the pandemic. And we also have to get parents back onboard with what Hamilton County's proposed to do, which is students are going to be in class. And from a school that had 90% in the building, that's the right decision to make. Whether they will be masked or unmasked, which I think should be left up to parents, it's, it's the only way to help students to be successful. It's the only way to really teach students appropriately. And it's so, it's the only way to, to help parents out also is to have them back in the building. There are options, virtual school and homeschool and things, but that's first and foremost, students back in the building and working on the areas of need. I think the second one that Mr. Lawson said is working toward the, and I know it's a huge amount, Dr. Highlander brought it up in a meeting, about a billion dollars worth of building maintenance and recovery we need to do. That, that's a tough one there. But then I think right now, also a third one that's very important, we have a new superintendent we need to elect. I hope that the school board will look first within and the strengths of the talent that's here in Hamilton County toward what we do, our Grow Your Own and our leadership pipeline. We have qualified people for that.
Thank you, Gary. Pam?
I agree with Gary King that our number one challenge is to hire a new superintendent. He is the leader of our district. He'll prove us, give us the guidance that we need for our district. So that is the biggest challenge that's upon us right now. But again, as I said before, a high qualified teacher in every classroom. I just talked to an HR representative, we've had 45 resignations in the past couple of weeks. There is a teacher shortage. We need to, we need to have a good quality educator in front of those kids to, to teach those kids. And proper funding, both for facilities and for programs. We need to lower the teacher pupil ratio. We need to have teachers with the supplies and the equipment and the facilities that they need to do the job that they do very well. And last, with the CDC protocols and decisions we need to make as a school board, what protocols to follow, and with the, the lack of learning that has happened this past year, and we need to think about the, the emotional and social well-being of our students, what they have been through this last year. And the growth that we're going to, that we're going to have to recover from some of, some of that learning loss. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Pam. Patrick, if y'all need to repeat the question, please let me know.
All right. Yeah, just repeat the question.
Yes, sir. Again, what do you believe are the three greatest challenges, issues for public education?
Okay. And as I sat here and I was thinking about those three issues, the only thing that came to my mind was literacy, literacy, and literacy. And let me explain why. I just found out in the last couple of months that it is illegal for our pre-K programs in the United States to teach kids the sounds of letters. It is illegal to teach them in pre-K, sounds of letters. Okay? If we are not teaching our children to read, why are we here tonight? If only a third of our children are reading on grade level, there is something wrong with that. And the money that we pour into our school system and the tax dollars that we spend is not being put to good use if our children are not reading. If I'm appointed to this school board, my main focus is going to be literacy, literacy, and literacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, Trey?
Yes, the three greatest challenges I seen, you know, and I know some of the previous answers have been the same, but I think the first one, you know, is, you know, the education and social issues. The, you know, are we in the business to teach social issues or are we in the, are in the business to educate? And I think, you know, one of the things I'll, I will be fighting for is make sure we're educating our kids so that they are ready, not only for, you know, you know, life in general, but beyond high school, college, whether it's, you know, in, in a trade or, you know, going forward, they're educated. What are we teaching them? And I think some of the things that we're teaching them doesn't belong in the school system. And that's one of the things I will fight for. The second issue, and it's, you know, it's an issue always, is the budgeting and finance. And I, you know, there's always, you know, saying, you know, people saying, well, we need to spend more here and more there. With my background and my experience, I can dive and dig into the budget and say, what are we spending money here for? What are we spending money? Oh, wait a minute, that's not where we need, why, that's not where the money needs to go. It needs to go here. And I've got the experience and the background to know how to, you know, see where the waste is and make, you know, the recommendations to, to the superintendent, hey, you know, this is not where the taxpayers want your, want your dollars going. Taxpayers want it here. I say, and, you know, we got to get, you know, the money moving where the taxpayers want it because that's, you know, that's who we work for. We work for the taxpayers. And then last is, and this has been hit on a little bit, you know, the, back on the, you know, the freedoms and the rights of the parents and the students. I agree with Gary. Our schools have to be open. Our kids cannot learn. Our personal experience, if, if our kids are lucky during the, during the pandemic, they, they didn't regress. But I can tell you firsthand, my, our kids, you know, our daughter regressed with, with special needs. We're sitting there having to do the therapies at home. We're not therapists, but we can't get the therapies that are needed. So what happens? We, you know, it regressed. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, Trey. All right, James?
I, I think one of the number one things is we have teachers teaching to test. And I know testing statewide is important, but our students should not come home in elementary school and middle school and high school and talk about all the testing and, 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 you know, I've always been the parent, I'm going to judge how our teachers and principals and students are doing based on my relationship within them. I know there's monies tied to our testing and all those things, but if, but if we get our parents and communities back involved, I think that, you know, get that pressure of testing for weeks and weeks and weeks out of there. Lack of parental involvement, but I also think we're guilty of just not letting them feel like they're comfortable in their schools anymore. And, you know, I just think that's a fact. And then, and I think we've seen some changes lately. We've turned adult high school back into vocational school up in Harrison. You know, I think, I think the problem of trying to fit everybody into one same mold, I mean, the majority of other countries get around middle school and they, they say, hey, James is going to be kind of on this worker's track and let's build him that way. And Trey's going to be on the academic track, let's build him that way. I think that we got to expand our vocational opportunities, you know, in public education so that they're not, you know, somebody's not sitting there in 10th grade, I went to school, the young man that slept through class. He was going to be a carpenter and a farmer in his family up in Harrison back then. And I always remember 30 something years ago, we forced that young man to go to school. So I always felt like we have some opportunities to fit the needs of vocational, would really help us out a lot.
Thank you, James. Patrick?
They had some excellent, excellent things they brought up of what we needed to work on. And there's so many things, I don't know that I could really add to it because most, most of what I would have to say would be the same things they already mentioned. Because like the COVID situation, the population growth is very important because that, that includes everything. I mean, the logistics of just moving school buses with the population, population growth. And then it has to do with the county commission and how they're building roads and expanding roads and things like that. There's just so much to that, I don't even know where to begin. And since I'm not privy to a lot of the information in the background there, I'm, you know, I'm just waiting to see, you know, what is going on before we can even start to make, you know, decisions on things like this. But there's a lot of work to be done. They bring up a lot of good points, and I, I think that we just have to keep working at it. There's no, there's no time to start, start or stop, just move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay. Thanks, Patrick. Roddy?
Thank you, sir. Uh, first off, I think we need to evaluate how we're educating our students. Our teachers are doing a great job, but they are forced into one mold. I don't learn like you. My kid doesn't learn like me. We need to make sure our kids are being, are able to go to the places where they can learn as they need to. Parents know what that is and parents need to have that voice. Parents need to be able to work with teachers. Teachers need to be able to work with parents. And whether that choice happens within Hamilton County or within a private school, charter school, magnet school, um, we need to ensure that our kids are receiving the education they deserve. Second, we need to ensure that our schools and our teachers and our parents and our students are receiving the support they deserve. Too many times you hear there's not money for that. There's not money for this. That excuse needs to go away, which leads to the third item, money. There's never enough. The entire county was just lit up, uh, recently over a property tax. That's not the way. We have to look at how we're spending our money, how we can generate revenue. And I believe my experience with legislators and local leadership will help us negotiate through that process. Thank you.
Okay. And I, is it Roddy or Roddy?
Roddy.
Roddy. That's what I thought. Sorry. I mispronounced it the second time.
I'm used to it. Thank you.
That E throws a lot of folks off, doesn't it? Okay. I need to take just a short pause. I need to ask Ms. Ford one question that's on here real fast. Okay. All right. Uh, I think what, uh, Gary, you're going to be the next one. Okay. All right. Um, I'm, I'm reading what's on this piece of paper. Okay. This, this was a question that was submitted to the PTA council, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. To Ms. Ford. Okay. So remember this came from someone, hopefully I think they're from District Nine.
We did try. They are.
Okay. Very good. They, we tried. I know Dr. Highlander talked about and, and Mrs. Ford to make sure that these questions came from District Nine. Uh, again, each district has their own little, you know, uh, everybody's got their own little wagon to, to steer as far as that. Okay. This is the question, Gary. And again, uh, uh, two minutes max. Will you support the separation of the city and county schools?
Interesting question. Wasn't expecting that one.
Well, I don't, I wasn't neither.
I will say this. I would rather see the city government support the Hamilton County government in its effort to support all schools. That, uh, I think Hamilton County is the governing body, but I think that city government, uh, has neglected certain funding and certain, uh, responsibilities by making it a Hamilton County issue. So, uh, I think, you know, where it is right now is where it is. Uh, so let's look at how we would fix that or make things better in that way. And to do that, it would be to encourage the city commissioners to support education through city funding.
Thank you. Pam?
I agree with Gary about the, um, funding with the city government. Um, I worked when I first started my career in Hamilton County, I was in Chattanooga City Schools. Uh, I transferred to a Hamilton County school, not because it was a county school, it's because I was, had the opportunity to open a program in that district. So I've worked in both districts and we consolidated. We consolidated because we needed to. We needed to put our funding together. We need to, and we need to be one district. We need, don't need to say that's an old city school, that's an old county school. We need to work together. We need to work together regardless if we're in District One or District Four or District Nine. We need all work together. So I would not be a support of undoing something that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
For, for me, I was actually a student when, uh, I was the last class or the first class when they merged the city and the county together. And one of the things that I can say, um, merging the counties together, that was a hard year because one of the things that they did, and this actually impacted me going to college, when we merged the city schools with the county schools, they literally gave me credits that I didn't earn because I was in the city. They just dumped credits on me. In my senior year, I didn't take a lot of the, the prerequisites that I needed to go to college. And that really hurt me. And so what we have to do as a district, we're going to have to make, or, or as a school board, we're going to have to make some hard decisions because what we're doing right now is not working. And we cannot continue to allow the growing counties like Udoa and East Brainerd that's growing to fund all of this stuff that's going on in the city and it not work. So if separating the school systems helped, uh, the kids in the city, then we should separate them. If staying together and we can, I'm looking at these fives, you know, on the wall, but again, 33% of our children are reading on grade level. So if we, we can't continue down this road saying we're doing a wonderful job with 33% of our children are not reading. So if staying together, if we can fix the system by the city and the county being together, we should do it. If separating them to see if something else worked, we should do it and be okay with that.
Thank you, Patrick. Trey?
That is an interesting question. Uh, I was expecting a lot of other questions tonight and that wasn't one of them. Um, my honest opinion of the matter is do, would I support the city and school system? Personally, I would. However, I think it should be up to the voters. I don't think it should be up to the school board. I think it should be up to the voters of whose children and parents are going, it's going to affect. Um, that's where my vote would be. If the parents in, uh, in my district said, no, we don't want it, then that's how I would vote. That might not be personally how I would vote, but that's, you know, and I think we are forgetting, you know, yes, it's a city-school split and I think, Patrick, I, I'll give my age away because I was in, in, at that time. It's not, it's not an easy, uh, transition. It, and it, it was a challenge during those, I think it was in the nineties.
Yes.
But at the same time, I'm, I'm a firm believer of giving, giving that right to the voters. That is their tax dollars and it should be how they want to see their tax dollars used. It's not for any of us to dictate that. We're here to represent the taxpayer. We're not here to say, well, we're going to split your school system or no, we're not going to split your school system. And for me personally, I would want to do what the taxpayers would want me to do because I do work for them.
Thank you, sir. James?
Uh, state law mandates that all 95 counties in the state provide school systems. 20-something years ago, Chattanooga quit on their kids. They voted to get out of the school system. It was their right to do it. The only way we get back if we want to have two systems is if Chattanooga City votes again, a referendum. So, uh, I don't believe that'll ever happen again. Uh, but the stuff that we carried and caught when they just overnight got out of the school business at the county commission, we inherited 40 more buildings, we inherited 20,000 more students. That ripple effect from that 22, 23 years later is still hitting us. And somebody in this room can rec- can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe Chattanooga City has ever given that funding to us. I think it was a liquor by the drink or something like that tax. I don't believe we've ever received money from Chattanooga City. And they don't have to. They sure did make the riverfront nice with their money and I love the area down there. But they quit on their students. And, uh, I would honor if they had a, a referendum and Chattanooga City, uh, citizens voted to have a school system again, I would honor that if they voted to do that. But as a county, uh, this is what we have and this is what we're responsible for.
Thank you, James. Patrick?
I, I really, I couldn't agree more with James and, on that. And I really don't see any advantage in having the two separate school systems. But if there's a good reason, you know, I'd be glad to, you know, hear what
Yes, sir.
they had to say about it. Um, but otherwise, I, I think that the county should be responsible. And I'm always, as far as government involved in school, I'm always more for a local, however you want to set it up, and less federal. Because I think that we need to educate our kids the way we see fit, not the way California or somebody else, you know, wants us to use their money. But yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with him.
Thank you, Patrick. Roddy?
It's all about the parent voice. If parents want their kids to have a segregated system, then they should be allowed to have a segregated system. Um, it will, I feel, make life difficult, uh, for all of Hamilton County, not, not just those left out of it. Um, but if that's what the parents want, then that's what the parents want. I can't say I personally would agree with it.
Thank you. Kenneth?
I think he was right a minute ago when he was saying that Hamilton County is responsible for the funding of the, uh, education of its kids. Uh, we don't have two separate school systems. We, we, we are Hamilton County Schools, Hamilton County Department of Education. So there is no two school systems. Um, it's unfortunate that we have the same schools over and over and over again in the press that, that are testing at lower numbers and they, it's, it just happens to be schools that are within the city limits of Chattanooga. But as far as two school systems go, that, we, we don't have any. We, we're, we're one school system and it is Hamilton County's responsibility to, to educate its children.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Okay. That was an unexpected question. Uh, this one would probably be a little more expected. Uh, so Pam, you'll be
Okay.
the first on the hot seat on this one. Uh, the question is, will you support open enrollment as long as a student furnishes their own transportation and maintains good attendance and discipline? Again, I'll read that one more time.
Yeah, read it one more time.
Yes, ma'am, because, uh, that does have a few components. Will you support open enrollment as long as a student furnishes their own transportation and maintains good attendance and discipline?
That's a good question. And that's a hard question to answer. It really is. Um, the way we have our school, our students go to, we, we do neighborhood schools. We have a certain zone in which they must attend where they live. The only way that that can be changed is if, uh, they want to attend a magnet school, which is by the lottery. And, uh, if we went to open enrollment, I think we would have too hard of a time to look at the numbers. How many kids are we going to have? What is a principal going to know? How many kids are they going to have at the beginning of the year? And I believe we would have so much movement within our district that it would be hard to properly place the right number of teachers and the support at that schools. So I think that if we did this with a district this large, it would be very difficult to manage and control.
Okay. Thank you. Patrick?
Um, yes, I would support that. Uh, I believe in school choice. I believe in parents should have a choice in where their children should attend school. And actually, I believe it would, would create competition within our district. We will know what schools are doing really well and what schools are not doing well. And what happens then, we can actually do what Memphis did in the Memphis, uh, city schools. What they did when they did open enrollment, those schools that had low enrollment, they turned those schools into charter schools and opportunities for kids in those districts. And then those, those new opportunity schools begin to grow. And so I think what would happen, yes, you would have some students that would leave schools and other schools would have high enrollment, but it would create opportunities within the city where we can turn those schools into charter schools, opportunity schools, vocational schools, where parents can now take tho- take their students to those, to those schools.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Trey?
Um, don't want to sound like a broken record, but I, I will, uh, agree with Patrick and say, yes, I think, you know, you should have, you know, the choi- uh, the choice, um, and, you know, in saying that, who are we to sit here and say, where are your kids can't go to, go to school? That should be up to the parents. And, um, you know, that's, that's the parent's choice and the parent's right. Um, why, you know, we, we don't know what's best for your child. You did, you know, the parent does. I mean, our job is to sit here and try to provide the, you know, the best opportunity for them. But at the same time, we, you know, you know, we can do what we can, but like, you know, it's up to, you know, the parents. The parents know what's best for their child and it's, you know, it wouldn't be fair to their child to pigeonhole them in one, you know, one school or one district. Um, and agree, you know, I will agree with Pam. It will be, there will be a lot of logistical challenges, but that's what we're here for. We are here to, uh, tackle tho- you know, those challenges that are brought before us and, you know, and me, and meet them head on and do whatever we can to help serve the parents' children because that's what we're here for. That's why we want to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
Yes, sir. 100% for, for open enrollment. And it's like you said, or the, the questionnaire said, uh, parents provide transportation and they be students in good standing academically and they come to school. These are our schools all across the district. Uh, and then, you know, obviously we would set up a way that we would know, you know, April or May, what the enrollment's going to be when we get to August. And, and you have to cut it off. But, but I think these are our schools and a, a student that wants an opportunity and a parent or family member that wants to get up 30 minutes early to drive to Sadi Daisy from East Ridge or wherever, then I think they ought to have that right to be able to do it. But again, the, the student has to be in good standing and be, you know, a, a pretty darn good student.
Thank you, James. Patrick?
I, I agree with the, uh, uh, parent's choice. Um, but I, the first question I would ask is what is driving these parents to want to take their kids to another school out of that area that's right next to their home? You know, it, it's the same system. Um, surely we have the same criteria for teachers that teach at those schools. Surely we're putting the same amount of money at those schools. What, what is it? Why would we have, it just seems like that'd be awfully lopsided and there's going to be a reason for it. And I think that we should take a look at what, what's, you know, causing that. Um, not just let them do open enrollment, but hopefully change their minds and make it where they're wanting to keep their kids in the school that's right next door to their home and keep them in that area.
Thank you. Good. Roddy?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So as I stated earlier, our kids learn differently. Our kids need different opportunities. The wonderful thing about Hamilton County is a lot of our schools have great programs, but they're different across the district. I think it, when I was in, uh, Leadership HCS at Hickson, they had a greenhouse and I think it was Hickson. Forgive me if I'm wrong. Um, and they were doing some great work with hydroponics. Uh, Howard had a great uh, audio visual program and was doing a lot with, with music. Um, I recently learned of another school that was doing something with aviation because I, I, I read a student recently got his pilot's license. And then I think about, uh, Udoa High School and the IB program and the Mechatronics program. These are great programs and these are teaching our kids. So let's give them the opportunities to learn and go where they need to go to learn that. If transportation's an issue for the parents, we should support them and help them find a way. If attend, if you mentioned attendance and discipline, if attendance and discipline's an issue, let's find out the root cause of that issue. Is it because they don't like the programs? Open enrollment helps to solve that problem. So I, I'm absolutely for open enrollment.
Thank you, sir. Kenneth? Kenny?
Is a great concept, but it is not feasible. Uh, you have 15,000 kids, 20,000 kids want to go to one high school and it's, it's just not sustainable. Uh, we have good schools. We, we need to offer things in the classes in the schools that the kids want to take other than the basics, obviously. That, uh, uh, it just, we, we can't sustain open enrollment. It's a great idea and, and it'd be a super concept, but we, we, there's no way to sustain it in this county.
Thank you. Gary?
So I'm going to go a little bit against my friend Kenny. Uh, so the school I just came from and retired from is Harrison Bay Future Ready Institute. It was an open enrollment school. Now it served, uh, Central and it served Udoa 80%. 20% could come from any school in Hamilton County. Parents provided transportation to either Central or to Udoa and then they got on a bus and came to our school. They were picking our school because the Central office has worked hard to get equity in the different learning communities. But not all schools can have a welding program. They're not made for that. Or a, a heating and air program, or plumbing, or electronics, or, uh, having the equipment to do architectural design and engineering and, and, uh, plasma cutters and that. And our school did. And that's why we had an open enrollment, though it wasn't the full population. Though it wasn't the full population, there is an alternative plan to allow a certain amount to go. And if they can provide their own transportation, they should. They should be able to pick. If it's best for what the student is, and I know, I have students there this last year, two years ago, one senior that didn't make it. Out of the senior class, one senior didn't make it. Last year with the pandemic, two didn't make it. And those are, so ninety-six percent graduation rate and ninety-four percent graduation rate with our seniors that attended our school.
Thank you. Alrighty. Okay. This question probably will be a, a one you thought may be submitted. So Patrick, you'll be there and I'll read it twice because it does have a few different points. What should our district start, stop, keep, or change that you will advocate during your time on the school board? One more time, I'll read it for everyone's benefit. What would you, what would, what should our district start, stop, keep, and change that you will advocate during your time on the board?
Okay. All right. Let's start with, uh, start. Uh, what we need to start is consolidating schools that are at half enrollment right now. Um, and what I mean by that, for instance, you have a Tyner High School that is a school that I graduated from, that the capacity, I believe, is around twelve hundred students or maybe eleven hundred or something like that, but their enrollment is like at seven hundred. And so that school is operating almost at half capacity. Then you have a Brainerd High School that also, um, the capacity is twelve hundred or a thousand students that only has about six hundred kids that's enrolled. Those schools are about three to four miles apart. Why are we not thinking about consolidation? That's something that we needs to, we need to start. What we need to stop, um, one of the things we need to stop is pouring extra money into failing schools. I know that's hard. I know nobody on the school board wants to say that. But there are schools in some district that have received eleven million extra dollars for those schools for the last ten years. And those schools are continuing to fail. And they have been failing for a decade. We have to stop pouring money into those schools that are failing. We can do what we did in North Chattanooga when City High School was going through a, an issue. What they did, what was called a hard reset, where they closed the school for a year and reopened it as an opportunity school. Now that school today is Center for Creative Arts that is doing wonderfully in our district. We have to do that for schools that are failing in our district.
Thank you. Trey?
Well, first off, I, I have sympathy for Patrick. That was a tough question to be the first one to go. So, no, that, so, um, we, we need to start looking at, and it goes back to the fact, what's the best way to use their money? And I, I think most taxpayers in Hamilton County will agree that their, their, their funds are not being used to the fullest potential. And it's not only, um, looking at, uh, representing the taxpayer, but we have to, you know, do, our, it's our obligation to do what's best for the children. And sometimes those are hard decisions, you know, there's hard decisions that need to be made, but we have to do what's best, best for the children. Stop, I, I would stop, um, and it goes back, almost start. We need to, you know, stop with the social issues and get back to educating. I think when Patrick and I were in the ninety, you know, back in school in the nineties, you know, it, you know, you're learn, you know, you're learning the ba, you know, you know, the basics, the education part. And I think we're getting away from that and he's even hit on literacy, literacy, literacy. If we don't teach our children to read, you know, why are we here? We, we've got to do that. And so, um, we need to, you know, stop on that. Keep, we need to keep our good educators. Whatever it take, you know, wha, whatever it takes to keep our good ones. And, you know, and I've heard this a couple of other times this evening, a couple of other times this evening. A couple of other times this evening. We're going to go back to where I've said, start and stop. We're, we're going to struggle with that. Change, um, I, I think we need to change our, the mindset of how we do business. I think over the, you know, there's been some decisions made very recently in the last few weeks that, um, were not maybe very popular with folks in District Nine. And I think the change needs to be, you know, how are we, how are we conducting business? You know, give everybody a voice and a, and a say and that they're represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Trey. James?
I think start, uh, and again, all my stuff surrounds our, our parents' communities. Start speaking up, uh, for parents without fear of retribution, maybe. So let them speak up. And I think, you know, I think some of our teachers and staff may feel like they can't always speak up as well, but just speak up. Let's not be afraid. You're not going to offend me. You're not going to offend. Let's speak up. I think we ought to stop, uh, you know, Chattanooga City just, you know, extended a little olive branch about wanting to help out in the school system. What they want to do is the social worker in every school or, or those type of things. And I know coming up through a tough, uh, childhood that I had, I know there's some teachers that, that, you know, kept an eye on us and, and made sure we made it through, but, but, you know, there's other places for that and it's not every teacher and principal need to be a social worker for everybody. Keep working within the budget that the county commission provides us. And get in there and, you know, find where we can cut some things out. Just because we want to add things doesn't mean we need to add money. We can add some things by cutting some other things. And we spent over three hundred thousand dollars over, on a PR campaign. You know, these, I'm with Patrick. These, these fives are what they are. Do your homework. See how we got those. But, you know, uh, our parents and students will be the best PR campaign if we invest in them. So, uh, we don't need to spend over three hundred thousand dollars for marketing our superintendent in our schools. It'll speak for itself with the job well done. And, and change the mindset that everyone's going to go to a four-year college. I hope that they all do. Two of my students, two of my daughters did. Two of them went to two-year schools. I work for the Tennessee Lottery. That's my job. We raise funds for these scholarships. But we can get kids ready in our schools and they can go have a two-year degree paid for if we just get them ready through lottery scholarships. So change that mindset that, that everybody can go. And I think every student in Tennessee ought to go for two years for a free school, you know, just pay for your books. But, but change the mindset that everybody's coming out and it's going to be a doctor and a lawyer. I hope that they are. But, uh, that's my first time I got today. That's pretty good. I've done good.
You got one to merit. No. Thanks, James.
Yes, sir.
Patrick? Yes, sir.
Well, my, my start and stop, I think, is the same thing and it's kind of just posing a question is, why are all our schools not magnet schools? What, why, why do some schools are, you know, parents lining up, spending the night camping out, you know, get their kids in there and in other schools, they're not? Why are they all not, why don't we use the same thing to teach the kids at all the schools? Why are they not all magnet schools?
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Roddy?
First, I'd start listening. I think we need to start listening. Listening to parents, listening to teachers. There's laws that actually are supposed to give parents and teachers a voice. I can tell you in Hamilton County, it's not listened to very well. I've had the privilege of working with teachers, um, who work with my son, who is autistic, and trying to get him to a level so that he can be independent. And then, oh, there's no money. Well, that's no, that shouldn't be an excuse. Let's see. Next was stop?
Yeah. Keep, stop, keep, change.
We need to, we need to stop with the bloated Central Office. We need to evaluate how we are spending our funds. You know, they brought up the PR campaign. There's, there's other avenues as well. How much more useful would that money have been in a classroom? Change. Let's start developing that plan for open enrollment. Let's start ensuring that we are teaching our kids, uh, the way they need to be taught, the way they deserve to be taught. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Good. Kenny?
We need to start getting more parental involvement in the schools, especially in our elementary schools. We have kids, and it's, it's a well-known fact, we have kids that by the time they get to the third grade, they're, they're not reading at level. And reading is the key. I mean, they have to be able to read to advance in electric, uh, in, in their education further on down the line. We need to stop pouring money into programs that do not bear fruit. And, and as a board and as board members, we can kind of gauge and look at things as reports from the different schools and from the different programs. We can see what's working and what's not working. We need to figure out some way to keep a superintendent more than four years. I, I, I think Dr. Johnson said a lot of things in the motion that, that, that seem to be bearing fruit. And I, I think, I think he did a, a good job, but for whatever reason, we, we don't seem to be able to keep a, a superintendent much longer than that. And, and I think we need to change the perspective of our school system. I, I've, I've heard opinions up here that, that, that shoot down and shoot down and shoot down. And, and we, we can't keep a negative view of our school system. We, we've got to have a better view and, and we've got to get the community to buy into a better view of our school system.
Thank you. Gary?
Well, I had a few that, uh, we need to start, but the main one I'm going to talk about has been done. Getting parents involved and especially in one particular area, uh, students struggle when they aren't in school. So I think parents need to get involved in what's called a parent attendance committee or working PTAs, uh, working with schools so we can, uh, and also a mentoring committee. And that's, that's how you try to, you know, stop the poor attendance. Stop, I think we need to stop, uh, having the budget as a secret. There's very few people that are privy to seeing the whole overall budget. I think, uh, both parents and teacher organization, uh, need to have a say in areas of the budget, even if it's through a survey. What I'd like to see kept is our, uh, what's called our Grow Your Own Teachers and Leaders. Uh, it's through the leadership pipeline, uh, leadership fellows through P E F, uh, principal academies. But the, uh, the Grow Your Own that's being done now is a strong way to keep good teachers and also help to grow them into being better teachers. And then the last thing, something I would like to see changed is, uh, changing and letting the best teachers teach the struggling students. We see in too many schools, the best teachers are teaching the gifted and the upper-level classes when, and it doesn't have to be every class, but I think our best teachers should have students that are struggling.
Thank you. Pam?
Okay. I think they were reading off my paper, but, uh, when I said before I didn't endorse open enrollment, it wasn't that I was totally against it. What I want to start is getting different kinds of schools out there. We have a lot of different multiple intelligence. We all learn different ways. I want us to think out of the box, create schools like the ones Gary had. Create, uh, schools that are like Ivy Academy, one of our charter schools. I think we should start, give them more options so they could go to it. So therefore, if you could, but if you do it in the magnet program, the students are provided transportation. So that would help those that wanted to go to a different school but couldn't provide the, the transportation of parents of poverty, they would perhaps be able to go to a school of choice. So that's what I would like to start. What I want to stop is talking bad about our school district. I would like the media to stop talking about our school district. I would like for the parents to stop talking bad about our school district. We have a great school district. We have fabulous teachers. We have fabulous, uh, parents. We have fabulous organizations that are working. We have fab, fabulous administrators. I want us to have, like you said, that mindset. That mindset that, yes, we can be successful. Keep, I want to keep the PTA enrollment that we've got going on. I want to encourage those parents to be involved. I want that, those doors to be open to those schools, so those parents. But we also need to also include the, the community members, the businesses, the money, the funding that's out there. And again, the thing I would like to change was the compensation for good teachers. I'm not bragging. I got Teacher of the Year. Wasn't paid one penny more. We need to compensate these exceptional teachers that they're making a difference and therefore they'll stay in the classroom and will stay in Hamilton County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Okay. All right. The next question, I'm looking, I think it was close to seven, six fifty-two. Okay, Trey, this is, uh, the next question. I'm going to add one little note to this, but it's definitely, I think, one you probably were prepared for. The question, or the, the submission, please give at least three requirements, qualifications you feel are necessary for the next Hampton County Superintendent. And I'd like to add a caveat to that because I really feel like our commissioners and our, our, uh, community needs to hear this. What's your idea of how this process should proceed in selecting the next superintendent? So again, Trey, uh, what, what are, you think are at least three, you don't have to list three, three requirements, qualifications you feel are necessary for the next Hampton County Superintendent? And how do you feel like this process should proceed?
Well, I'll start with how the process should proceed. It should be in open meetings to the general public. That's, I think that's a very easy question. Um, any, anything we do should be open, open to the general public to hear what, hear what we have to say and how, how we feel about it. My first thing is I think it should be someone local. I don't think we should have a national search. I think the talent, we have the talent here locally to, for the next superintendent. You know, you, you mentioned the require, you know, the requirements, um, uh, three other, three other requirements. Like I said, besides being, I guess, a local candidate. You know, and it, and it's hard to say requirements because you don't want to, you know, cut yourself short. Someone, you know, if you, you know, you can say, well, they have to have this or that. Well, then the best candidate may, you know, that would be best for our students and our children would, you might eliminate. Obviously, they would need probably some administrative assist, or administrative, uh, background in a school system. I think that would ob, obviously help. You don't, obviously don't want to hire someone that's never been an administrative in a, in a school system. So I think that's very important. But I think also, um, a requirement is, um, I guess a last requirement? Probably, um, you know, I, you know, you can't quantitatively this, but I, I think the parents should have a say. You know, and, you know, that's up to each school board member. You know, I know as if, uh, if I was, uh, get the honor and privilege to represent District Nine, I want to know, you know, the requirement, I, you know, I said, can't quantify it, but I need to meet with my constituents. You know, what, what, who, you know, here's who's put their, their name in the hat. What, what, you know, who do you want? Because they're going to be the superintendent of the children. And, you know, so I think that should be a requirement. The school board members should have to go talk to their districts.
Thank you, sir. James?
Yes, sir. I think, uh, a, a good candidate should be someone that has an opportunity to, uh, teach, be an administrator at the elementary level and middle and high school level, preferably a combination of principals at, at each of those levels. I think they need to, they do need to have some business savvy because there's a lot of decisions made on funding and buildings and those types of things. So kind of understand how that part works. Obviously, a, a, an educator and, and someone who has been involved in, in building, uh, curriculum or academics and, and maybe a setup of curriculum for a, within a school system. Uh, the search should be local. It should be, you know, if I worked for a company and, and didn't think that the president or CEO was, uh, you know, going to be able to be hired from within, um, you know, I, I'm not going to work my tail off to be a good principal or administrator or anything else like that. I think we have people in this school system that will serve this community well. And I think a superintendent position is a community position, uh, just like our principals and teachers. Could somebody come in from out of town? Sure. But I like somebody that is here local, that is committed to our community. That's why we've had folks that haven't stayed more than two or three years. We've had a good gentleman that's stepping down in a couple of weeks. But I want somebody committed to our community and our county. So I think it's a, a local search and we, we commence quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Patrick?
Well, I, I disagree on, I'm going to disagree with James a little bit here.
That's part of the time today.
But.
Well, that's one of the requirements you have to be able to make your own decision. So speak up.
No, yeah, you had some good points, but I, I think it should be more of a CEO or a business person that has this position and less of an educator because we have, I don't know exactly how many teachers we have in the school system exactly. But I know we have several thousand and we can, a good CEO is going to pull from that, um, knowledge base right um, knowledge base right there, anything he needs to know about how to educate kids. We've got thousands of people that can contribute to that and they're hands-on, right there on the front lines. And I think those are the people that will really, you know, bring some substance to some of the decisions that would be made. Um, I do think that they should be local. I think it should be somebody local. Um, and I think as far as his, um, point of education, generally somebody that level will have an education themselves. They've been through schools, they've been to college, they've been through things. And so they'll understand how valuable are, you know, some of the things about education. And I agree that they would stay if they were, they were definitely local. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Roddy?
Thank you. While it won't happen for this election, I'm actually a proponent of electing the superintendent. People need a choice in who they want. I personally like somebody with business savvy. It's not the superintendent that's picking the curriculum. Uh, every time I've heard of curriculum, there's always a committee that does it. And that committee is our teachers. They're the ones teaching it. They're the ones that know it. So we don't need a superintendent to do that. We need a superintendent that's going to listen to the concerns of the community, that's going to build up the district. And we need a superintendent that will listen to the parents. It shouldn't take a parent complaining to the State Department of Education in order for him to pay attention to them. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Kenny?
Uh, I certainly think experience in education is, should be one of the requirements. Uh, if, if you're going to be a superintendent of a, of a department of education, then you, you should be experienced in education some way, shape, form or fashion. A degreed individual, obviously. Uh, I think, I, as long with, I agree with most everybody up here, I'd love to see somebody local. I, I remember when we had local superintendents of several local superintendents that were, were excellent superintendents. They, they obviously didn't face the problems that we face nowadays, but, uh, at that time they were good superintendents. Uh, and I'd like to see them be able, I would like to see us come out with something, with maybe a, a longer term limit, a longer initial contract possibly, instead of going and after two years, let's extend their contract four years, let's, let's make an initial five-year contract. And then obviously you, you can, you can, with, if there's calls one way or another, you can eliminate that contract. But, but I think we should start out with more than just a, a two-year contract and then, and then sit and vote whether or not we want to extend it or not.
Thanks, Kenny. Gary?
All right. I'm going to start with the qualifications of a superintendent. So I, I think a superintendent first and foremost should be visionary. Uh, he's going to have to be visionary to hit the levels that Chattanooga and Hamilton County expect of their students. And to be a good visionary, they have to also be able to take action, but be flexible enough to know when whatever goals and that, that they had set need to be changed by listening to other talent around them. So a visionary is probably the number one. Number two, they need to be a good listener and a good communicator. And within that, to be a good listener, communicator, that also means they're a good relationship builder. Uh, it, so as I, I'll, I'll go to that in a minute. Uh, they, there are so many people that look to the superintendent as an example in the classroom, those teachers. The superintendent we had outgoing started every professional meeting teaching something. He led by teaching. And then the third thing, it should be somebody that can create a partnership with the communities that the county serves. Uh, Howard has their success because of the businesses that support them. Brainerd had the student get the, uh, you know, their license for pilot because of the business that supported them. Miller Industries is a partner with Oudewah and Central High School because of, you know, the business that they're in. So, you know, those are the three things. But it should be done within the system. We have talent in the system. It, it should be done in, with people having a say in it. I know at the end, it's the board that votes, but people should have a say.
Thank you. Pam?
The qualifications that I would be looking for, number one is an educator, they have an education background, but they also have the training to understand the business of running a school district, because running a school district is like running a business. So they have to be talented in both the education and the business part of it. Number two, I think it's very important, as Gary said, someone that can build relationships both with parents, teachers, students, the community and the city. And they should be open to listen to what we have to say and take that into consideration. But the bottom line for me, is I want a superintendent that believes in all kids and believes that all kids can learn and all kids deserve an equal opportunity to, to learn. As far as the process, the transparency is what we need. We all need to know how, when, where this is going to be done, what questions are going to be asked, what is the process? Include all the constituents in this. So we, there's no decision-making that we're not aware of.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Patrick?
Um, I have three Ls for qualification. One is local. Everyone has kind of explained, we all want a local superintendent. The second one is very important. We need a superintendent that loves our community. And how do we know if the superintendent loves our community? We have to ask those hard questions. If I'm appointed as the school board member, I want to ask the next superintendent, where does he stand, or she, stand on critical race theory? Where do they stand on white privilege training? We don't need a superintendent that will come into this county and divide us. We have worked really hard to get our school district to where it is today. It would be a shame if we put somebody in that position that comes in to divide us by race, um, ethnicity or anything else. The third one is we need a superintendent that will listen to us as parents. I know for a fact, right now, I've gone to town hall meetings in District Nine, parents are upset. They feel like they do not have a voice and they're not being listened to. We need a superintendent that will go into these districts, one by one, one through nine, and listen to parents and let them explain to them their, their grievances. And not come to a school board meeting and be attacked by school board members or people on, on staff. So we need a superintendent that's local, that loves our community and that listens.
Thank you, Patrick. I think that's, uh, the end of that round, right? Trey, you, you were on the hot seat there. Alrighty, and looking over the rest of the questions that are here, some have been addressed. Uh, there's one that, um, this is, I feel like needs to be asked, and this will be, uh, James. If your personal ideals are different from the majority of your District Nine constituents, how will you vote? I'll read that one more time. If your personal, uh, ideals are different from the majority of your District Nine constituents, how will you vote?
Uh, I'm going to be placed on this board to represent the community. We probably have 6,000 students in District Nine, I don't know the exact number, uh, have to be a voice for the community. Personal, uh, opinions and, and thoughts cannot come in. I can't be one vote out of these six or 7,000 people and just always be James's way. And then about James Walker, it's about District Nine. Uh, and how do I get that information from those, uh, you know, thought through, uh, you know, polling, uh, folks in the community? Have some, some other people poll and gather some percentages and, you know, you can't speak to everybody, but you can get a couple hundred people on a phone tree. Uh, thought about having, uh, you know, first Saturday, set at Harrison Bay, uh, under one of the pavilions each month. Second Saturday, go set at Cambridge Square in Oudewah. Uh, be out in Georgetown and Birchwood and, and just, you know, offer to be out there for a couple hours once a month and, and at least let people come up and have opportunity to speak and have a cup of coffee or whatever. But no, you have to be the voice of the community, even if you have to make a tough decision that I don't personally agree with.
Thank you. Patrick?
I, I agree with James on that is the, uh, the hard part about that is generally the people that speak up are the ones that are mad about something or just very outspoken people. And the majority of the people are usually somewhere in the middle and they don't say anything or, you know, show up for, uh, meetings or anything like that with the school board. So, um, I mean, I would vote for, uh, what my constituents would, would want, but it's going to be a tough, tough to get the information out of them to find out exactly what they do want.
Yes, thank you. Roddy?
So, like's already been said, it's up to the community. That's who we're here to represent. Um, but on top of that, it's, it's not just about meeting with certain people at certain times. Um, the, the people who are hearing, uh, what's going on and seeing what's going on, we've got the teachers, we've got the principals, uh, we've got the parents. Um, there's, there's no reasons we can't meet at schools or with PTAs, uh, and, and hear what they have to say. It's their school. Let's meet them at their school.
Thank you, sir. Kenny?
I've umpired Little League ball for 25 years and with every call, one person's going to be happy and the other one's going to be mad. And that's, that's the way it is. You can have a, a meeting of your constituents and you will have a hundred different opinions. So you, you sort of have to try and, and, and go over an issue with the people and, and tell them your ideals and you listen to their ideals and somewhere you have to come to a consensus. But no matter what that consensus is, you're not going to make everybody happy all the time. It's, it's virtually impossible. Um, I, I, like I said, I would not necessarily vote my personal feeling, uh, all the time, but I would, would, would meet with people and try to get a consensus of how, how the people think about things.
Thank you. Gary?
Well, the needs of the one doesn't come in play, so my ideals and that wouldn't be a part of it. Uh, and that's, that might be a tough part, but, uh, you're a servant of the District Nine and you're listening to what they have to say. Sometimes you've got different groups within your own district pulling at you in different directions. And I think you have to listen to all, whether it's a majority side, uh, you know, the most bodies that want this. Even smaller groups have good ideas within their needs and that, and then you have to take those into consideration. But I think the one thing that has to be remembered is that this is a D-nine seat, but it's a part of a nine-seat board. And you have to be able to work with your other board members to do what's best for students. And that's, that's the overall big goal, uh, that a school board member should have. They are representing their community, District Nine, but they're also representing Hamilton County. And they need to do what's best for Hamilton County in the long run.
Thank you. Pam?
I totally agree with what Gary said. The hardest part of being a school board member is listening to everyone, because you're going to hear the one that talks the loudest most of the time. But you've got to be available to, to get to the masses, get to go to meetings, have open forums, have an opportunity for people to voice what they want to do. And again, you're going to make the best decision and the decision that is for your school district and for yours, uh, for your own district. And that's, that's difficult. I may want something in my district, but another, uh, another opportunity might be better to be voted for in another district. We've got to look for the entire district as one. Uh, again, I, yes, we'll listen to the, the, the people in the district and take everything into consideration. And, but I want to make sure I hear everyone's word.
Thank you, Pam. Patrick?
Uh, the same for me. I would, um, I would listen to my district and the, and the constituents in the district. Um, but I, well, when I went to seminary, I learned something about servant leadership. And when you're a servant leader, a good, a great leader knows how to build consensus around issues. And I think one of the things I was thinking as all of us were, were talking, we all come at, uh, the problem from a different place. But wouldn't it be nice to have all of us that's sitting up here, sitting on some type of D-nine board, to be able to represent our district? What if we all just, after this is said and done, let's not just go into our corners, but let's continue to work together? Build a consensus of leaders where we can go out into the, to the district and listen to the constituents? So that's what I would do. I would, I would always be a listener. I would never just vote my ideals. But if it ever came to a point where the constituents wanted something that was against my conscience, I would know it would be, it would be time for me to lead this seat. I would never vote against my conscience.
Thank you. Patrick. Trey?
On the, uh, personal ideals different constituents, I think everybody's touched on, you know, you, you do whatever you can to reach out to the district and listen to what they have to say. Uh, I think where I differ a little bit from some of the other people, uh, on this panel is, so, you know, it's not a matter of what's good for other districts. This seat is to represent the, the voters and the parents and the children of District Nine. And if they say, this is what we want, then that's how you vote, because you're representing them. And if it does become a problem, like Patrick said, then, you know, internally, the individual needs to evaluate where, you know, where they stand and are you representing your district? We're here to represent the taxpayer. We're here to represent the parent. We're here to represent their children. And they're, the people in District Nine are, they're, that's what they are concerned about. They, they want your voice for them. And sometimes it may be against the, you know, what you, just folks in District Nine want is different than districts one through eight. But that's how you, you know, you have to vote, because that's what they're telling you. And you know, and you know that by getting out into the PTA meetings, knowing, you know, what, what the parents, uh, want for their children. It's not a matter of what I want, it's a matter of what they're wanting. And if it becomes a difference, then, you know, you have to evaluate. But they will evaluate that for you, uh, uh, come election time next year. So that process will take care of itself. Um, but, you know, it's a matter of representing the people in District Nine.
Thank you. Alrighty. Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, well, here's my thoughts. Dr. Highlander was asking, we need a summation. I think there's a question that's been presented that is a summation question a little bit. Uh, I don't want to play favoritism towards Patrick and Roddy and say, oh, you boys didn't get on the hot seat the first question. Uh...
He volunteers.
He volunteers, okay? Let's see, where's that coin at, you know? As, as Kenny said, it's 50/50, you know? Does everyone feel comfortable of having one final question? We, Dr. Highlander said, I think we have 15 minutes. There's eight of you, eight times two, 16, so we're going to be overtime already. But, uh, does anyone have a problem with, uh, I'll ask the final question, uh, that I feel like is, uh, appropriate, because a lot of the other things I think have been addressed. Does anyone have a problem with that? Okay. And before we conclude, again, I just want to thank each one of you. Uh, you know, one of the things that, in, in public education, it's called public education. And we as the public need to get off of our you-know-whats a little bit to realize, instead of some of you said complaining, there's a way to address those things. And that's being involved. Okay? Involvement in your children, there's, there's no other thing. Your job is not that important. Your children are the most important thing. So, um, thank you for willing to, um, to run for this position, uh, Ms. Commissioner. We will pray for those who will eventually, uh, make this choice, because I understand this, y'all will make the choice as far as that. And then whoever's selected, you will be one of nine to lead us to find the next superintendent that will lead this school system as far as that. I've put four, uh, 31 years in and I did not regret one minute of it. Okay, Patrick, uh, you get to be, this last question is not difficult. Uh, it is a one answer. I mean, you can use more than one word, okay?
Ass in the wheel.
Yeah. But it is a basically simple question. You know, we always hear number one. And this question is, what do you believe is the number one thing that will improve Hamilton County schools? Now, I'll let you think about that for a moment as far as that. If you slide over into two things, that's fine, but the key word in that question, there's two key words. One is what's the number one thing that will improve? Okay? If we're not trying to seek improvement as a school system, we're going the wrong direction. So that question is, what do you believe is the number one thing that will improve Hamilton County schools?
Well, I mean, it's obvious, we, I mean, we've got a lot of money here in this, this county for schools. We've got a lot of... We've got a lot of great teachers, we've got wonderful administrators, we've got school buildings, we've got everything we need. We've got plenty of students, of course. But, I think the biggest difference in any of these kids' education is their parents and their involvement in their education and in their life, for that matter. And I think that's the number-one thing that would improve education overall. If we could figure out how to get parents more involved, I think that's the answer.
Thank you. Roddy?
As we've sat here the last two hours, there's been a common theme, whether you're talking about parents, teachers, administrators, the school board, business leaders, I'm sure there's some subset of people I'm leaving out, and for that, I apologize. But for all of them, it's communication. Frequently, we hear the complaints, and that's the only communication that's heard by, by the people that sit right here. All they hear is, "Oh, we..." What, 33% literacy rates? Yeah, we'll use that one. But nobody's offering solutions. No one's offering to help. We sit up here and we say, "We're here to help." But, there's no communication with the other side. I sit here and, you know, I've looked at that aisle most of the night here, and it reminds me of our, our community and the lack of communication between the sides, whether it's taxpayers not wanting a property tax increase, or the, the school system asking for money. And then, there's this divide. We have to overcome this divide and communicate better as, as a community, as a society. And so, it's my hope that whenever we do leave here, we learn to communicate better among all sides, so that we get our kids to where they need to be when they're paying for our nursing homes. We want them to be, we want them to be nicer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kenny?
I agree with one of the answers that one of the fellows give down there, and it's, it's definitely parent participation. Well, I mean, we have got to get these parents reading to these kids, young, two-years-old, three-years-old. It's a huge, huge problem in our system when, when you look at, at these kids coming to school, not prepared, not prepared educationally, not ready to, to add one-in-one, not ready to see spot run. They, they just are not quite ready. And I think the parent participation and getting them started from an early age is a big, big key to improving our school system.
Thank you, sir. Gary?
So, if you look at the states that are the most successful in education, you're looking at the New England area, but also Iowa. And they have started doing something that I think we need to do, and it would incorporate parent involvement, not to confuse it with an IEP, but they have started doing what's called an IIP, an Individualized Instructional Program. And that's where every student with their parents and a teacher sit down and they draw out the goals and objectives for that particular student's needs for each year. And they do, and it is time-consuming, but the states that have done this have had great success with parents getting involved, students taking ownership of their own education, and teachers being able to have conferencing time with students, even in elementary ages, conferencing time with students to talk about those goals either met or not met. So, IIPs, I think, is a good thing we could do.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Pam?
No one would disagree that parents are the number-one reason, the influence in the classroom. Parent involvement's going to improve performance in the classroom. But we're not going to have that in every single parent, in every single household. So, we've got to make improvement in our district ourselves by getting good leadership. I think the appointment of the next superintendent is going to be crucial. It's going to be the person who's going to be visionary that will keep this improvement that we've been having. And I think the role of the, the school board in, in helping to find that person, however that, that solution is, or whatever method they use, I think that is how we can see the most improvement. Yes, do we want more parent involvement? We wish every child had a parent that would read to them every night.
Thank you. Patrick?
As I think about this question, I think I go back to what I said earlier. The, the one thing that we can do as a district that can impact our tax dollars for years to come is teaching kids to read. All of the issues that we have in our community, whether it's crime, whether it's what's going on in inner cities with police, it all stems from our children not being able to read on grade level. I want to go back to that point again, where in pre-K programs right here in Chattanooga City, in Tennessee, the pre-K teachers cannot teach our children the sounds of, the sounds of letters. And what that is, they're teaching kids to learn words by rote, by memory. And because they're learning words by memory, if those kids don't learn those words, they go on and can't read. You and I learn to read by sounding out letters and sounds. And this is what's happening. This is a mandate that has come down from the federal government in pre-K programs. Teachers get fired, they get fired for teaching sounds of letters. So, I, I tell you, go out and research it for yourself. Our number-one issue in this district is literacy. It doesn't matter who's going to be the next superintendent if our teachers are not teaching our children to read.
Thank you, Patrick. Trey?
Yes, the last couple of minutes, I think everybody's had good, good ideas, good suggestions on the number-one thing to improve schools. Parent participation, communication, IIPs, good leadership, and literacy. But all those require one thing from your school board member, and that's listening. We have to listen to the parents, we have to listen to the children, and we have to listen to the teachers. If we don't listen to what they need, we can do all this, but it will not work. We have to listen to those people. If we don't, none, nothing else will work. That's what we're here for. That's why we get appointed or get elected, to listen to the people. And that's what we need to do.
Thank you, sir. James?
I think the number-one thing to improve Hamilton County school systems, I see Ms. Lee back there, Coach McCarson, Coach Highlander, a couple of folks up here on the, on the stage with us. We don't teach our, we don't treat our teachers and educators like professionals anymore. I think that we treat them like they are employees of this big old business of education. We don't allow them to teach and love on our students like they should. And it's turned into, "How do I get this funding for this? How do I get this funding for this? Ms. Lee, you got to teach this to get this funding." And I'm just using that because I see you sitting there. We've gotten so far away from letting our teachers teach and be professionals, and we just treat them as employees and business people.
Thank you, James. Patrick? We're done. Did I scare you? I had a brain lapse. I had a... All righty. Again, thank you so much. I want to say again, Dr. Highlander had this ideal as he was thinking about, okay, should we not be listening to our parents? Should we not be listening to the community? So, I think this is a valuable sort of model that may need to be implemented all across Hamilton County, because you folks have had an opportunity to share your thoughts, agree, disagree, that's the American way, okay? As long as we do it in a proper manner. And so, again, I thank you, Steve, for allowing this to happen. I want to thank the tech guys over there, the PTA, Sherry, thank you for collecting the things. Thank you again, Commissioner Smedley, School Board Member Tucker, I don't think looking out, I see another elected official. But again, thank you so much. I'm going to get off my feet for a minute. I want to say, thanks, thanks to each of the eight of you. I appreciate all of you so much. I felt like I've gotten to know you better. Some of you I've already interviewed with, and you've had interviews with other commissioners. Commissioner Smedley, I want you to know, several commissioners have texted me and said, they were watching online. One of them said, "You look cute sitting up there." And I said, "That's what, if you saw me laugh, I was not laughing at you, it was one of the commissioners." Oh, okay. That was probably meant for Mrs. Smedley, I'm sure, not me. But, I wish we could have gotten to every question. I really wish we could have. But I thank you so much for all you've done. I thank the Hamilton County Department of Education for allowing us to use the facility, these guys that stay, and ladies that stayed away from their families. And I tell you, let's give our emcee, Mr. Starkey, a hand. Please pray for wisdom for all of us. Thank you so much. Good night.